I'd like to call the May 1st, 2024 Regular School Board Meeting to order, please. We, invocation by Mr. Martin Wright, District 1, and the Pledge of Allegiance District Plan. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we praise and thank you for another day on this earth. Give us your grace that we may effectively do our part as public servants and lead this district with confidence and unity. May your love surround us. May your peace calm us. May your shield protect us and your wisdom guide us. We ask all of these things, all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Congratulations.
Pledge of Allegiance from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item D, low call.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Deahyatt?
Here.
Ms. Bevan?
Here.
Ms. Petita?
Here.
Mr. Plannis?
Here.
Ms. Boujwa?
Here.
Mr. LaFon?
Here.
Ms. Wells?
Here.
Ms. Sharpenchuk?
Here.
Number two, awards and recognition. A, to recognize the schools selected as Louisiana Department of Education Comeback Campuses.
Madam President, so for the last two years, the Department of Education has recognized schools following COVID. The initiative to get all of our kids back on track has been called the Louisiana Comeback Plan, and they have, the state has then recognized schools that have made a comeback. And they define a comeback by increasing the percentage of students scoring mastery and advance and decreasing the number of students that have scored in below proficiency and then getting back to pre-pandemic levels. Tonight, two schools are being recognized as comeback campuses by Louisiana Department of Education. Those schools are the Virtual Academy of LaFouche and Bayou Buff Elementary. I will tell you that for LaFouche Parish, we have been impacted probably more by Hurricane Ida than by COVID. And to have the virtual school, which has students that were greatly impacted that are enrolled in it, and Bayou Buff, which is still not back to its original campus, performing in this way, is just a true testament to the leadership on both campuses. Super proud of all of them. All right. We're gonna get the banner.
Mr. Banner.
Okay.
This is the banner. We're gonna take one.
You told me you didn't have the banner.
But let's take one without the banner.
Okay.
Okay. Exactly. I can tell you which one of them.
There we go. There we go. That's perfect.
I think you're the same.
Yeah, that's the same. We can reuse this one. We just give that and take it. Come on in. Come on in. And I promise, we are rebuilding Bayou Buff Elementary.
So our next recognition is a very special one for our very special lady. Through the Louisiana Exemplary Educator Program, the Louisiana Department of Education recognizes educators from across the state for their impact on student success. This annual program acknowledges, honors, and spotlights exceptional early-to-mid-career teachers, teacher specialists, assistant principals, and principals who exemplify Louisiana's education profession. It is great honor to announce that this year, Derek Orsido from North LaRose Elementary was named a Louisiana Exemplary Educator and is only one of sixteen educators across the state of Louisiana.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. We're gonna actually live in more than this. From some perspective, sixteen folks across the state, there's eight hundred and seventy-five teachers in LaFouche Parish. She's gonna be recognized in New Orleans at Louisiana Teacher Leader Event in the last week of May, where only one or two teachers from every school across the state is gonna be there, four and six thousand teachers. And so to be one of sixteen who are recognized for her accomplishments is such a huge feat. Thank you so much for what you do. We're lucky to have you. Congratulations.
Okay, we have two student recognitions tonight. This first student placed third overall in the state in Ag 2 at the State Literary Rally. This young lady, if you don't know, was also the state of Louisiana eighth grade student of the year for the entire state of Louisiana last year. And now she's in high school and she's winning more things. So Blake Lee Fauqua from Central LaFouche High School.
Good job, Ben.
And this next student was selected to the LHSAA Composite Academic All-State Team in Track and Field, from Tivito High School, Luke Guidrick.
All right, folks, if you're sticking around for the meeting, welcome to have you. If you're not, the restaurants in Tivito are open. And I'm thinking they're collecting sales tax. In all, it's such a privilege to work with such great people. Thank God for what y'all are doing. And to the kids, thank you for what you're doing. And to the aspiring, new future teacher leaders of LaFouche Parish, thank you for sticking with us. Thank you all. You have a good night. Welcome to stay. Otherwise, you can go through the, as you leave, you don't have to go back through the references.
I will now. Yeah, I'll say do it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Congratulations.
Item number three, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held April 10th, 2024. C, minutes of board member in service held April 18th, 2024. Can I get a motion? Ms. Petita, motion? Dr. Deahyatt? Second. Any public comment? Any board comment? If there are none, we can vote. And motion carries. Thank you. Before, approval of policy and academics committee recommendations as per meeting held April 24th, 2024. Dr. Deahyatt?
To approve job descriptions for the positions of Information Technology Supervisor, Public Information Officer, Dean of Students, and Assistant Principal, so moved.
Ms. Sharpenchuk seconded it. Is there more to the word to speak on? Will it be coming or out?
Oh, we can do it now. Madam President, I just want to clarify for the board members that we will be transitioning a number of administrative assistants at the elementary level positions to become Assistant Principal positions, which is why the job description change is required. And the positions that will stay as the teacher salary positions will no longer be called administrative assistants, will be called Deans of Students. What we can see in the slide being presented now is the number of elementaries that will get an Assistant Principal. The high school positions that are currently administrative assistant positions transition to become Assistant Principals. And if we scroll down, you can see that these schools will transition from having a position titled Administrative Assistant to a position titled Dean of Students. The actual work of these people will change very little, but it is a name change to not confuse the public because what has formerly known as secretaries are now called Administrative Assistants, and that name was confusing a lot of folks. And so those or the finances associated with those changes, it's a total sum of one hundred eighty-eight thousand eight hundred eight hundred twenty-three cents to make these adjustments on the administrative scale. And the other name changes are frankly unrelated to any funding because the funding stays the same. Any questions?
Any public comment? Any board comment or discussion?
I just wanna, I just wanna reiterate what I had said in the many meetings. I think it's so important that we do this to give support to these schools that really need help, some of them, but all, and then to these administrative assistants are really doing a job of the Assistant Principal. So I think that's really, it's a good idea. I think it's well worth money that we're putting into this. So definitely I agree with you.
I am absolutely for this. I think it's very important now that we go ahead and grow our own people to become leaders in our parish, and I think that this is gonna be a pipeline to do so. So I think that this is a fantastic plan. Thank you very much.
This makes my heart very happy. I've been trying for a long time. So hearing no other discussion, we can vote. And the motion carries. Thank you to all those who helped to come bring this about. Number five, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held April 24, 2024. Ms. Sharpenchuk.
Thank you, Madam President. Item A, to authorize advertisement for bids through the Purchasing Department for frequently purchased equipment and supplies, including A, janitorial and paper products, B, toner, printer, IT equipment and supplies, C, office equipment and supplies, D, maintenance supplies and small equipment for the upcoming 2024-2025 fiscal year. So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Plannis. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And item carries.
Item B, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for a web-based program to help teachers create developmentally appropriate goals connected to Louisiana state standards. This program shall provide teachers with resources and strategies to help students meet their goals and include progress monitoring and data reporting. Can I get a motion?
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Seconded by Dr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion is approved.
Item C, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for an intervention program for grades six through eight with ELA components that encompasses benchmarking and progress monitoring. So moved.
Seconded by Mr. LaFon. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries.
D, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for district-wide mental behavioral health screening tool program that allows district personnel to identify students in need of intervention and that matches intervention options with student needs. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries.
E, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for an intensive and comprehensive research-based program that addresses laying the foundation for teaching social skills and activating social cognitive processes in students. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bevan. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion carries.
Item F, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for alternative curriculum to address the K-12 Louisiana Extended Standards for significant disabilities students. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bevan. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries.
G, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for in-person or virtual sign language interpreting services. So moved.
Seconded by Dr. Deahyatt. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries.
H, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Special Education Department for a K-8 technology literacy program that is based in the science of reading and can be utilized for Tier Two and/or Tier Three interventions. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Petita. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion is approved.
I, to authorize requests for proposals for the Special Education Department for a K-8 intervention program for literacy and math. So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board comment?
I was just gonna say that Ms. Bevan, what is the job at the meeting? Explaining what these different intervention and things were, but also it's time for renewal of a lot of the things that we're currently using. So it looks like it's a whole lot of new stuff, but most of it is here already. Thank you, Ms. Bevan.
Motion is approved.
J, to authorize advertisement for proposals for the Secondary Education Department for an asynchronous learning platform. So moved.
Thank you. Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? If there are none, we can vote. Motion is approved.
A, to authorize proposals for weapons detection systems and award the highest, most responsive, and responsible proposal for the Evolve Weapons Detection Products from Alliance Technology Group and take appropriate action. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Bevan. Any public comment? Do you have to move out? Say would like to say a few words?
Sure, if you'd like to say. Well, thank y'all for having us. My name's Michael Groh. I live here in Tivito, one of the areas in LaFouche and Long Good Street. And Alliance, I work for the manufacturer. We're out of Waltham, Massachusetts, and work for Alliance all the time.
Yeah, sure. I'm Brooke Starhart with Alliance Technology Group and with my colleague Sarah Mink.
Hi, I'm Sarah. I'm, thank you guys for welcoming us. It's been awesome to meet all of you and really excited.
So anyway, obviously, you guys saw this on the way in. You know, we were asked to keep this short. So just from a high-level perspective, right, Alliance Technology Group, we work very closely with Evolve and manufactures the system that you guys walked through this evening. Right, the purpose of the system, as we talked a little bit about, is to prevent weapons of mass casualty from entering, whether it's a school building, a hospital, stadium, you name it. And so really what the goal is, is to be able to allow the students to come to school every day in a safer environment and pass through the system with, you know, very minimal interaction from a searching perspective. We're specifically looking for the characteristics of mass casualty weapons and doing our best to ignore, you know, common day items that students are coming to school with. So as they pass through, if there is no alert, they'll just continue on to class. They can hold hands with their friends. They can walk in with their friends. We don't care how many people are coming through at once. And then if a potential item is detected that has the potential to be threatening, you'll get a bounding box to show exactly where that potential threat is. We'd ask them to step off to the side, the reason being, we want to continue everyone else into class. Now, if you think about a school environment, you guys are, schools in general are a little bit unique where it's difficult to get that many students into the building in such a condensed amount of time, right? The buses arrive, we've got to get them in. And so really, the goal of the Evolve system is to enable you all to do that on a daily basis. And the reason that doing that on a daily basis is so important is because it takes the level of randomness out of it, as well as any bias of why is this school, why is it happening here versus not there? And then arguably most important is, it becomes a permanent fixture in place which allows the district to benefit from the deterrence factor, right? There's no guessing whether or not this exists. It's always there. And you'll see that it actually deters, you know, threats in general, not only from students, but then also the community. And then the other, you know, I think advantage that you guys will benefit from long-term is the ability to screen visitors, late students, et cetera. While you might not have someone right there at the front entrance, right? As you guys saw, those tablets are wireless. We can put them in the front office. We can make sure that everyone coming into the building is able to be screened. And then obviously, you guys read about it across the country and, you know, we work across the country. There's been this heightened risk of sporting events. And so part of the design and what we've worked with the district on is allowing for those more ruggedized and mobile units that you saw here today, that the honesty is already broken down and moved, right? And so the purpose is, at the end of the school day, you may take it from the cafeteria or the bus lane entrance, wherever that may be, and wheel it out to the football stadium and have it for Friday Night Lights, right? Keep that crowd safer as well. Part of our process and Alliance Technology Group in particular, where Evolve's largest K-12 partner, so I personally have been involved in deploying well over 500 systems in dozens of school districts across the district. And as an organization, we've done almost a thousand Evolve systems throughout the country. So partnership's really important to us. We'll work with the district staff to evaluate all of your schools before anything even shows up. We'll meet with every single principal, understand where we're gonna place these, put together a project plan, and then implement them. And this isn't a drop it off and have a good one type thing. We actually physically install all of it. We train every school by location, not as a district. We recognize that principals are unique to their schools. And then we spend the first several days at each school with you guys, helping you through the operation, because this is a change, right? And we're gonna, you know, leverage our expertise in having done this and knowing what works and what doesn't, and work with you guys, you know, over a three, four-year period to make sure that this goes well. So tried to keep it short. Thank you so much for your time. I'm glad that you guys were able to see it. And we're more than happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir, Mr. LaFon.
I just, safety is always important. Is this something that SROs will take care of, or we're gonna train someone to sit at this, at the place?
It'll be both, Mr. LaFon. All right, so you have an SRO, not on every single campus. Now, you have an SRO in every campus that we're installing these. These are currently gonna be placed at the high schools and the middle schools. But the SRO is not gonna be able to be in two places at one time on some of these campuses. We'll be running these systems on two different sides of the campus. Okay, so the training that he's talking about is training our existing staff.
Okay, thank you.
There's a button that you can push. So as that machine moves in, there's no factory there, there's no SRO. And secretary heads it to death. She'll get an alert. There's a panic button. There's a, it's all different levels. I mean, you alert a kid in an ambulance, she can hit a button, but SRO knows exactly the location to go to to screen that person. You know, there's a lot of analytics. It gets smarter over time. It's not a traditional metal detector that's in a box that just beeps for everybody. There's a lot of stuff that goes behind it.
Thank you. Roll and stop, Gate 110, Boujwa Street, Raisin, Louisiana. Thank you all. Just answered all my questions. I was concerned with that if they were, you know, gonna contract them as employees to work the system, or the board would have to hire other employees to work the system. It looks like nobody else is gonna be hired and the school board employees will be working the system. So that basically answers my question. Sure support this. I mean, never know, we can get in football stadiums. I mean, we've seen that shootings in the last few years in high school football stadiums in the state of Louisiana. So I mean, I fully support this and use it in every public event and everything that the kids attend as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the demonstration. It was nice to have you.
I didn't beep when I went.
Any other public comment? Any board comment? Ms. Bevan?
I also agree with the demonstration. I think it was a really good job to have you guys here to show, so everyone who came in could see. And, you know, we all think safety is of importance, but it shows the usability of use and also the technology that comes along with it. I think it's very I think it's very important for our public. Thank y'all very much.
And we're actually purchasing these equipment, or we're renting it all week.
It is, it is a, Mr. Tobias, can you expand on it? It's a subscription where you're not actually going to own it, but it comes with the availability to use it.
Four years of subscription, so it comes with software. They will be at our mercy for four years.
So our price is what we're paying them for four years.
Any other?
I just like the way that it pinpoints an area on a person to really expedite the process. Like we, they talked about pulling the person to the side. You're still able to process people through to stop a backlog. But at the same time, it went off on the left shoulder area. So you know specifically to search that and you don't have to take the time to search an entire person and you can focus on that area. So I think that that in itself should be help of the flow and stop the backlog. So I like that.
Madam President, there's nothing I would like to just add to Ms. Fatida's comment. I think I said this in committee. I want to make sure that we understand again. The quote that they prepared was based on the anticipated number of devices needed. I anticipate that we likely missed something and we may need to add and/or subtract from this as they get on those campuses and look at, at Central High School, for instance. They may have to add another single point somewhere and not adjust this price at the end. I don't anticipate major changes, but I do anticipate some potential slight changes to how this is presented, right? Once we hit the ground and see the throughput that we actually realize.
Thank you for that. And like we all said, safety is of the utmost importance. This is a great step in that direction.
Do we have, do we have, do we wait that if there is a change, that you can just take care of it? Or does it have to come back to the board or?
The way I would anticipate that is we would authorize a change. You know, we'd come back to the board for a change order post-change, right? So I don't think that this would change. But in order to maintain full transparency with Jordan, how much this has cost, we would bring the change order, just like we do in contracting projects.
Again, this is, our voters supported us when we asked for a portion of the sales tax to, for its school safety. And so this is just a putting there for money to be used.
It's very good use, sir. Any other comment? We are none. We can vote. And motion carries.
Item L, to authorize the renewal of software licenses for GoGuardian Classroom Management from LemonX in the amount of $54,610.22 for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Babin. Any public comment? Any board comment?
Just for clarification, I know we talk about classroom management. This is classroom management of devices and students, not students.
We are none. We can vote. Motion carries.
Item M, to authorize the renewal of File Wave for Device Management, PC, Apple, and Chromebooks, and TeamViewer for Remote Access and Management from SHI International Corporation in the amount of $66,745 annually for a total cost of $200,235 for three years. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries. We can adjourn. Item number six. Approval of Land and Facilities Management Committee Recommendations as per meeting held April 24, 2024.
Item A, to approve a request from Ball Party League to waive fees for the use of facilities at Racine Middle School and Lockport Middle School gyms for basketball practice, if the requests are responsible for the $300 damage deposit and custodial fees. So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. And motion carries.
Item B, to approve a change order request for various Hurricane Idar repairs in the sum of $25,742.20, a credit of $1,128.15, and to add 90 days to the contract for repairs at St. Charles Elementary School. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion carries.
Item C, to approve a change order request for Hurricane Idar repairs in the sum of $1,403.60 to modify the ceiling to accommodate the new HVAC system at the Rose Cutoff Middle School. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion carries.
Item D, to approve a low bid from Foray Contracting Group LLC in the sum of $5,382,300. Alternate number one, $225,600. Alternate number two, $227,100. And alternate number three, $167,000, which totals $6,200,000 for the St. Charles Elementary School Classroom Edition. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Deppner. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion is approved.
Item E, to approve a change order request in the sum of a credit of $575,980.51 for Value Engineering for the St. Charles Elementary School Classroom Edition. So moved.
I'll second that. That's a good one.
Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion is approved.
Item F, to approve a change order request for repairs in the sum of $104,369 and add 60 days to the contract for security fencing at Lockport Upper Elementary School as a part of the single point of entry project. So moved.
Seconded by Ms. McQuaid. Any public comment? Any board comment? We can vote. Motion carries.
Item G, to approve a request to hire Bado Engineers Incorporated to begin the design work for high school stadium's spalling repairs project in the sum of $2,800,000. So moved.
Seconded by Dr. Diop. Any public comment? Any board comment? Glad to see that we don't have as many items for our, I was going to say that. Finance had more items than facilities. We can vote. And motion is approved. Number seven, new business. Item A. See a report, bids received by the Child Nutrition Department for A, Bread Class 1; B, Milk and Milk Products Class 2; C, Food Products Classes 3, 5, 7, 8, 9; and Janitorial and Paper Products Class 11, to be used for the 2024-2025 school year. We take it for being passion. And the motion would be to accept the bid from Flowers Baking Company as the lowest bidder meeting all specifications for Bread Class A, Eastside Jersey Dairy, VBA, Prairie Farms; as lowest bidder meeting all specifications for Milk and Milk Products Class 2, Roll Star Foods, VBA, Onfood, and Cassine Inc. as the lowest bid received from the recommended vendors for food products, food classes 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and economical. You know what I want to say? Economical janitorial and paper supply and the lowest bidder meeting all specifications for the purchase of janitorial and paper products Class 11 and to be used for the 2024-2025 school year. So moved. Need a second by Ms. Shorten. Any public comment? Any board comment? I want to say something. I know Ms. Fletcher couldn't be here tonight, so I was emailing.
And this is just the normal process she has to every year.
We can vote. And motion carries. Item B, to accept the low bid from Joe's Septic System meeting all specifications for the cleaning grease traps for the 2024-2025 school year. Need a motion by Ms. Wells, seconded by Ms. Fatida. Any public comment? Any board comment? Miss Wells, this is just the same thing. It's just renewal we do every year. We can vote. And motion carries. Acknowledged, everybody. Item C. Motion to select the daily comment as the official jury for the La Pooche Parish Journal, I'm sorry, for the La Pooche Parish School Board for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Yes, ma'am. This is a requirement by law in accordance with the RIS statute 43141. School boards have their first meeting in June of each year. It's just like the newspaper and official journal for a period of one time.
Need a motion? Ms. Babin, seconded by Ms. Fatida. Any public comment? Any board comment? Yes, Ms. White.
I know we talked about this last year, but just so the public knows, this is our only option, right?
Yes, ma'am. The subscriber ship rate has to be a certain thing. The state defines who your official journal is. We are tethered by law to make this decision.
And as Ms. White says, none of us look in the orange, so we don't call it a vote. We can vote. And motion is approved. Number eight, memorial resolutions. A, Mr. Percy Shampine, retired custodian, Mr. Deppner.
Mr. Percy Shampine was hired by the La Pooche Parish School District on February 6, 1981, as a custodian at Bayou Blue Elementary School. Mr. Shampine retired on June 11, 1996. Mr. Shampine served the La Pooche Parish School District for 15 and a half years.
Three, Ms. Gail Veal, retired teacher, Ms. Babin.
Ms. Gail Veal was hired by the La Pooche Parish School District on August 16, 2002, as a special education teacher at WS La Fogg Elementary School. Ms. Veal became a licensed social worker in 2003 and served as a social worker for the district until her retirement on January 27, 2015. Ms. Veal served the La Pooche Parish School District for 12 years.
Item C, Ms. Bessie Brown, retired teacher, Mr. Wright.
Ms. Bessie Brown was hired by the La Pooche Parish School District August 29, 1960, as a teacher at Racine Upper Elementary School. Ms. Brown retired on June 1, 1991. Ms. Brown served in the Pooche Parish School District for a total of 31 and a half years.
I have to say, I do know you, Ms. Brown, from Racine Upper Elementary. Wonderful lady, full of class, and loved her students. She was a great teacher.
Madam President and board members, on these resolutions being adopted by general consent, the copy of these resolutions will be recorded on a special page of our minutebook. No objections. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minutebook. Item number nine, tentative dates of future meetings. A, there will be no committee meetings held in May. B, a regular board meeting will be Wednesday, June 5, 2024. And this is our May meeting, as you're aware. And I know our students are, will be getting out soon. So I know May is difficult for them. So I wish them a good end to the school year and a wonderful summer. And we'll see you back in all this. We'll have a business.